Let's see, I will call the regular meeting for the June 9th at 7:09 to order and let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have the students?
No, unfortunately, I didn't get the chance to load that up.
Okay, well, let's do this.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic.
To the Republic.
For which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Justice for all.
For all.
Thank you. Okay. Approval of the agenda. I did have a quick question for that, Dr. Willett, because, you know, one of our many conversations today, because we talk all the time, had mentioned that we're going to use the timeline. Do we need to do that in executive session?
Do you need to do what? I'm sorry, say that again.
Your timeline for this.
Oh, no, because we're gonna still go into executive session to talk about it. We're just talking about the timeline. I'm just, I just edited the document. It's,
I'm just making sure.
Yeah, no, so same process, just different document.
Okay, so that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure to verify if we need to or not.
Sure, sure.
So, at this time, let's go to the approval of minutes. We can do the May 17th, 2021 special meeting minutes and also the May 26th, 2021. I will entertain a motion to approve both.
Christina Plord, I make a motion to approve the May 17th special meeting minutes and the May 26th minutes.
Madhu, your usual two seconds, or Tony, you can have it, that's cool.
Okay, Lisa, pick one. Let's go ahead. Any discussion? Are there any issues? If not, let's do the roll call votes. Madhu.
Hi.
Plord.
Hi.
Tony.
Hi.
Sophia.
Hi.
Griffin.
Hi.
Reenie.
Hi.
I as well, therefore those minutes are approved as is. Let's go to public participation. At this point.
Hold on. Did we, did we already approve the agenda? Because I actually had something to bring up about that.
Yeah, no, we were just discussing the, Dr. Willett's super is. Yeah.
Okay, can I, can I just make a motion to make a change to the agenda? I just wanted to swap items M and L. So we can have public participation before we go into executive session. That way people aren't sitting here until like midnight if they want to say something.
I think we would just have to have a vote on that.
Okay, so I make the motion that we swap items M and L.
I second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? So we will vote. So Madhu.
Hi.
Plord.
Hi.
Tony.
Hi.
Sophia.
Hi.
Griffin.
Hi.
Reenie.
Hi.
I as well, therefore we will swap those two out.
Thank you.
Okay. So we will go back to the public participation. Tony, the timer will give you the 30 seconds visual and vocal, just to let you know. When you're asked to speak, if you could please list your name, your address, and like I said, you will have two minutes. At this time, I will open it up to the public. Just raise your hand. So going once. Oh, I have a visual hand for Sarah. Go ahead.
I've never done Zoom before, so.
Well, it visual works.
This is my first Zoom. I'm Sarah Briggs. I am 157 Anderson Road, Tallent. Do I speak now or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'm basically just here to listen and I have emailed Dr. Willett a few times regarding the children wearing masks for the upcoming school year. My son is going to be starting kindergarten for the first time in the fall with you guys. And I was just kind of here to listen and maybe get some updates and see what you guys discussed regarding that.
Okay. Thank you. And at this point, just so that you know, we usually do the, do the public participation and then comments can come into the points of information is what ends up happening.
Okay.
Where members can speak and Dr. Willett. So at this point, we're just going through all the comments for the public.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Liz.
Hi, everyone. First, 54 Josiah Lane, Liz Costa. I just want to commend Tallent High School and specifically the class officers, class advisors, Mr. Poland and Mr. Zenzak for what they put together for our seniors. Was really, really impressive what they put together the last week. And then I know graduation will be wonderful, but I just wanted to commend them all. It was clear that they took input from both students as well as the advisors and I've never seen something come together that was more beautiful and more well planned and put together. So congratulations to them and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Liz. Anyone else at this time? Okay, let's move on to correspondence and that will go back to Tony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We received an email concerned with the policy committee meeting cancellations. Author is interested in knowing what the plan forward is. An email asking for committees to have co or vice chairs. An email asking for a plan for committees to continue their work even if a member is not present. An email thanking Dr. Willett for continuing full day education during this heatwave. An email articulating concerns with the effects of the heat and mask wearing. Author asks that the district look at making mask wearing optional for the remainder of this year and the next. Email concerned with the mental health risks to forcing children to continue wearing masks. The author would like it to be optional. Email asking to take away the mask requirements for next year. Email requesting that the team review the CDC guidelines and work towards unmasking the children. An email reiterating concerns with committee meeting cancellations. Author asks for board member responses. An email articulating the desire of a group of concerned parents concerning the removing the mask mandate from our schools for next year's school year. And an email asking that our children are not required to wear masks. Author also asked that critical race theory is not taught in our schools. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Tony. At this point, let's go to the points of information. I will open this up to everyone, including Dr. Willett. If you wanted to, I know you had sent out information about the masks, because that is a state level ordeal. So I don't know if you.
Yes, so, um, so the, I think the question was specifically about next year. I did send out information about what we're required to do to the remainder of this year. And I think it's executive orders while they, as well as DPH and CDC require school districts to require masks through the remainder of this year. However, there has been information potentially shared from Dr. Fauci on a national level and others that potentially students who are in grades six through 12 in particular, or those ages that can be vaccinated may not have to wear masks next year. Now, having said that, I'm not sure what the situation is ultimately going to be. Should it, should be DPH permitted, we may be able to say that students who have shown proof of vaccination, students whose families have shown proof of vaccination may not be required to quarantine and/or wear masks. But that, that remains to be seen. We do have to see what happens once we get into the summer and we see where DPH goes over the summer and into the fall. So we do have reason to believe, however, that there will be some lifting of the mask mandate because Dr. Fauci did make mention of it. And when he did, he made mention explicitly of the, the age group that can be vaccinated, ages 12 and above, which kind of equates to grade six and above. So we'll have to see how it goes, but at least there was mention of that, that at that level, those who had proof of vaccination would know. Maybe over the summer. I know Pfizer has been applying for status for vaccinations for all ages. And so that may extend through all ages. If there's proof of vaccination, those who have that may not have to wear masks. So that's all we really know right now. We're kind of waiting to see what happens. But what, what we are being required to do is require masking through the end of the year, at least with the exception of if you're outside on recess and so on, and you're not congregating, children don't have to wear.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. Let's go to board members. So Madhu. You are mute, Madhu, so.
Thank you.
There you go.
Sorry about that. So I did have something, someone sent me an article showing that Tallent had a net number, a net positive number of move-ins, so like 117 move-ins. And it got me thinking, do we, is there any way to know if that translated into an increase in our TPS population between the October attendance number and the, and June, we'll say?
We definitely had a difference from earlier part of the year to later part in the year. Went up to, the last I looked at, it was 2,308. And so we did add quite a few students in this particular year.
Okay, just something I was curious about.
Yeah, just to throw it out there, you know, a nice enrollment sheet, Dr. Willett, would be great to show the students that come in and where they go, just.
I think I have, I know you're looking monthly, so it'll be nice when we're out of COVID. I can do all kinds of things, but yes.
Yeah, I'm just, just throwing it out there as a suggestion.
Sure. Sure.
That was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Madhu. Plord.
Thank you, Ashley. I wanted to thank Ms. Briggs for having the courage to speak up for the first time. I, you know, I hope your son enjoys kindergarten when, when he enters. In regards to the masks, like Dr. Willett said, we have to follow guidelines, laws, all of that. In regards to advocacy, there may be more advocacy parents can do as well as the board at the state level for our kids. So if my co-chair of the communications committee would agree, maybe we could put that on the communications agenda and just talk about it and see what we could do as a board to advocate for our kids. So thank you, Ms. Briggs. And then in regards to, there were some emails about the policy committee. I just wanted to commend Tony. I went back and looked. Since 2014, the policy committee has not met more than four times. And then when Tony took over as policy chair, it's met 13 times. So thank you, Tony, for having a passion for policy. And that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else at this time? Okay. Let's move to the students' rep reports. So let's have Simmer and Alexandra.
Hi, everyone. So we had prom for seniors last Friday, June 4th, and class days, which was Saturday, June 5th, and both of those were really fun. And the upcoming Monday and Wednesday during school, we're gonna have graduation practice, which is gonna be next Friday at the Yargud Stadium. And also I would like to thank all of you for the amazing Yukon sweatshirt and for all the kindness that you have shown this year. I've just learned a lot. And I just want to thank you all. You were just really amazing.
Thank you. That's awesome. I'm so happy. I was like, well, I'm gonna go and just drop them off. I didn't ring the doorbells or anything, but I was just like, okay. So, awesome guys, thanks. Alexandra?
And then, so quite a few students were recognized for their hard work this year at the Night of Excellence last Tuesday, which went very well. And then I don't think I'm gonna be able to make it to the next meeting on June 23rd. So I just wanted to start by thanking everyone for the sweatshirt as well. I really appreciated it, appreciated it. And then I also want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to be the rep for the past two years. I've had a really great time. I really enjoyed myself and I've learned so much. And then lastly, student council recently elected its new Board of Ed representatives for the next year. So I know Natalie's here, so it's Natalie Mitchell and Emily Pereira. And I think Natalie's here, so Natalie, just want to say hi.
Hi, Natalie, welcome. I think the internet's a little fuzzy. So we have Natalie. So let me write the names now. So Natalie Pereira.
Emma.
And I'm a.
Emily.
Natalie Mitchell and Emma Pereira.
It's Emily, but yeah.
Emily.
I'm excited, but you know, I hope that our reps here, you know, you guys have a great future. I think that you guys are going places and I can't wait to see. You know, whether or not you guys can make it to the 23rd. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the graduations coming up and everything. I just got that through. So why don't we go ahead and give them a nice little round of applause for doing this. So thank you guys so much and welcome to Natalie and to Emily. So I look forward to working with you guys. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Dr. Willett, let's start off on a nice positive note here. Let's do the celebrations.
Yes, so we, you know, we do from time to time, and especially when we are outside of the pandemic chaos there. We were doing celebrations and so bringing them back to the, to the Board of Ed meetings. So there are so many things to celebrate with our students and staff at Tallent Public Schools that it's impossible to do them at any one time. So we'll be providing them over the span of the, over the span of the year, probably every third meeting or so. So just if there wasn't something included here, we'll probably be including it in another couple of meetings. And please just let me know to anyone in the public or anywhere else, if there's something going on that, you know, that is, that is a celebration for, for the schools, for our students. We just want to make sure we cover that. So please share them with me as well. So a couple of quick celebrations for this particular span of time in the, in the spring. You did notice, and I did send out some sports congratulations. Some, I won't read everything here because there's a long doc, but just to, just to highlight that, you know, senior Adriana Rhodes and freshman Charlotte Pacheco earned all conference for the Central Connecticut Conference and All State and All American Honors in Gymnastics. And congratulations to our CCC conference champions and our teams, girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, THS golf team, Tallent Boys and Girls Outdoor Track Teams, they're all champions. And, you know, that's, that's a fairly regular thing for us in Tallent. Tallent has a lot of championship teams. And so kudos to the teams and to the coaches for their amazing achievement. And, you know, so I'm always, we always see them out there running or practicing, so it's no, no surprise. Invention Convention, for those of you who don't know, this is a competition, a science competition. Stephanie Cassidy and Faye Sleman are two teachers in our school system that help students engage in the Invention Convention where the inventors of tomorrow present their inventions and, you know, and compete against each other for the selection. There were students who were represented amazingly, and the following students received recognitions in the Invention Convention. So you can see them here and you can see their, their inventions as well. Sophia Ash, the cozy canine cradle. I mean, some of these, I'm not sure exactly what they are, but that one I'd imagine makes dogs happy. Kylie Kroll, bracelet board, Cecilia Ruiz, gyro oxy hydrogen generator. So, you know, check that out. That'll be something amazing you can buy probably at Best Buy sometime in the near future.
Well, that sounds like a Shark Tank thing.
It does, actually. And whatever it is, we could have used it today because we lost power. Von Combs, simply crunchy, sounds tasty. And that's something that I'm sure if you ask him about, he could tell you. And Audrey McCowan, a breath, breathe better buzz box. She was recognized as inventor and national finalist. So Audrey's going to complete, compete with more than 400 finalists at the Invention Convention US Nationals. Very big deal. This is, Invention Convention is an organization that's been around for, for some time now. And, you know, people, kids have actually gotten patents and things coming out of that. So it's a really very exciting situation. Congratulations to all kids involved. For our teacher recognition today, Michelle Campbell, math teacher, TMS. I used to be the principal there. She deserves it. She's amazing, always has been. So this is a, a kudos to her from Jen Webster, the math supervisor in the district. Finally, last but not least, we have a series of presidential award for excellence or of excellence candidates and recipients, rather, in this case. And I'll just kind of scroll through because there are many. Tallent School System always has a very large number of children that have reached the grade and criterion levels for these awards. So it's just to give you an idea of the scope of just one of the schools and one of the seasons of the presidential awards. We are constantly getting them. The students are constantly getting them. So kudos to all the students who received it this year. And I'll scroll through them slowly here.
You can't see your screen.
Can't?
No, so the.
All right, well, that explains why everyone's staring at me like, where's the screen? There we go.
So if we can have that, because there's a lot of memes on here. I mean, I have my.
Yeah, no, no, I'm glad. Thank you for telling me that. I did not realize it. Hold on. Can you see it now?
Yes, it's starting at Lincoln, so there's a few.
Yeah, so here we go. I'm just gonna do a quick up and down here.
Yep.
So here's the sports. The Invention Convention that I talked about and the kids who won the Invention Convention. Cozy canine cradle, Kylie's bracelet board, the oxy hydrogen generator, simply crunchy, and the breathe better buzz box. Teacher recognition is Michelle Campbell. And then the Presidential Award of Excellence.
This is great.
Yep. They are, we have an amazing group of kids and staff here. I'm so proud to be here, so proud of them. Unfortunately, there will be no extra movie footage at the end, like an Avengers movie. This is simply the names of all of the amazing kids. I think I see a shake on there.
Yeah, there is one.
There you go. So congratulations to all of you. Once again, we will continue to do celebrations. I couldn't get them all in on, on this particular agenda, but every third or so I'll be putting more on so we can celebrate every, you know, every child, so.
This is excellent. I'm really proud of our students. Like, this is fantastic. And the culmination of a year that we've had and to have this many students and our excellence, I mean, this is fantastic. I love to see this. Very exciting. Let's go to Plord.
Thank you, Ashley. Well, this is great and congratulations to everyone. Job well done. By suggestion, the, the national finalist to the Invention Convention perhaps could demonstrate to the board one meeting? I mean, that's so cool.
That would be awesome.
I would, I would love to know what the breathe better buzz box. Just throwing it out there.
Sure.
I think that would be fantastic. Let's go to Madhu. Madhu, now we have your picture.
So, hold on.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. So actually, I was actually gonna say, this is the exact same thing Plord did. I am totally interested in the breathe better buzz box. I did also, I just want to say congratulations to our student athletes, our young inventors, their coaches and mentors, and our award winners. I'm proud of their accomplishments. And I also wanted to thank Simmer and Alexandra for being a part of us. And I wish you both good luck in the future. And I look forward to meeting our new student representatives, Natalie and Emily.
That's a great, you know, a lot of positive. I don't see, I'm a fan of positivity. So this is fantastic to have. I love the having, would you, every third meeting? I think that's something to look forward to. I think that if we can celebrate our students' accomplishment, I think that goes a long way. So. Anyone else at this time? If not, we will move on to the monthly financial report.
Okay. Okay, so the monthly financial report. Oops, that's not, that's not right. Here it is. The monthly, I'm sorry, let me move something to the back here and monthly financial. Okay, so as you know, the monthly financial report is provided at the first force meeting of each month. In this case, monthly financial report does close out the month of May for us. 11 month, 11th month of the year, and the business manager provides a narrative to let us know roughly where we are at. The attached May 2021 financial approach shows an available balance of $832,193 or 2.08% of the current board's budget. And you'll also notice in the end of year reconciliation documents, this figure is pretty close to what we were thinking we would be at. And the end of year reconciliation document projects where we'll be, you know, at, at the point of June. And so there maybe and hopefully will be an update in June and July for the end of year reconciliation document. And you'll see how this, these funds, you know, are reconciled as we get to the end. So in addition to this general overview, I also do like to give you a couple of details about, you know, about this particular month. And I'll just load up the expenditure report and try to get it to blow up a little bit here. So as I do each month, I try to go over some of the highlights for the expenditure report. And this month's salaries are currently under budget. You know, we, we did try and have been trying to hire over the COVID pandemic year, but, you know, it has been true for our district and other districts that staffing has been a bit of a challenge. We are recovering that now. We're noticing that that's picking up and we are recovering and getting the positions, getting people filled. But we did go throughout the year and a number of positions, people, people retired or chose this year to, you know, do something else with their lives. And so the current available balance is one of the chunks of why we're at 830 at this point. The current balance is 331,000. It will fluctuate a bit, but that's going to be one of the things that, you know, that impacts our end of year line. Substitute available balance is 59,000 under budget. You noticed that the sub-budget was higher as we went along. Available balance dropped by 36,000 last month. We have temporarily added an assistant principal to cover for a few, few dates of absence on a few things that occurred at the high school. So that impacts it a little bit. And so there's a number of things happening on that line, but the larger impact of that is over the year, you know, having to get the sub-coverage. And so that's why you saw that got run down a bit over the span of a year. Overtime expenses cannot be encumbered. They're currently under budget by 11,000 as we get through May. They're down by last month by 16,000. Stipends are over budget. Again, this year the pay-to-place has been reduced. And so that's going to impact this line. Also, within prior years, the stipends have been encumbered. So, you know, this line is going to kind of balance out as we get to the end, but we did collect less this year. So we can expect that to, you know, to reflect that. Health insurance severance, employee benefits are collectively 48,000 over. That's because we did have more people leaving and more employee benefits to pay out. And that was not uncommon for schools in this particular year. Newly employer, newly hired employees and retired employees, they, they can drive FICA, medical, Medicare, Social Security, and so on. So newly hired and those who retired since the beginning of the year, they can immediately change available balances. So the available balance right now is 99,000 under budget. And, you know, that does reflect a lot of our fluctuations this year with employment. Retirement course reimbursement unemployment expenses are collectively under budget at the end of May. Unemployment is under budget by 12,000, which is, which is good, given we did have a couple of fluctuations there. And the rest of it is under budget by about 67. The benefits consultant and workers' comp remains on target. Legal audit and technical services are all over budget. 26,000 through May. The district completed negotiations this year, not only with the paras, but also the secretary union. And so that does affect these lines a bit, as, as does some other legal implications, the, the work we had to do this year. So expenses on these lines will, you know, will increase a bit even between now and the end. It's going to obviously remain over budget. And also the BOE approved purchases of the end of year reconciliations will be reflected in here as well. A shed, the truck rental, moving labor, BGP related stuff that was in the reconciliation document. So that's gonna impact on that line. Repairs, maintenance, custodial, cleaning, equipment, technical expenses continue to be incurred as the year keeps on. And you'll see that through June. Many of the maintenance and custodial expenses are cyclical. So it does, you know, they do continue to kind of aggregate throughout the year. We can expect June to have an impact on that too, as those things continue to get expended and used. Student, you know, student transportation is under budget by 49,000. That was, you know, bigger before. And of course, now as we get to the end, it's a little less under, but it is under budget. Barring any major issues, the transportation line will be under budget probably by the end. Maybe not by much, but it will be. Special education tuitions are under budget at the 11th month of the year at this point. You know, it does fluctuate. You can never really be sure because anything can happen. You know, it does fluctuate. You can never really be sure because anything can happen even at the end. But I would expect that to, to stay. We did use and continue to utilize state troopers. The situation is, you know, increased recently. So we do have a presence at the buildings. This need for public safety also during the pandemic has typically been not, not that high this year, but we're going to end the year with, you know, with this additional use of the troopers. Right now, the budget is under budget. I do expect it to continue to be a bit mainly because we didn't have to use a lot of public safety officers for events this year because we did not have as many events. So it is going to probably balance out and we'll still have some money in there, even though we do have an increased trooper presence. Energy expenses are all transferred to the town's universal internal service fund, as you know. Textbooks have been fully encumbered. They are over budget by about ten thousand, which happens sometimes. That does fluctuate as, as prices fluctuate and needs fluctuate a little bit. Curriculum supervisors will continue to work on that. Instructional supplies, miscellaneous supplies, general supplies, they're over budget mainly due to additional expenses for things like the Argus Stadium, other graduation and reimbursement of COVID supplies and food expenses. So we'll see some of these things. You know, kind of balance out at the end, but you know, as we receive reimbursement. But you know, you'll see it over right now. And new instructional equipment is over by about sixty five due to encumbrances for these district wide computers and where the impact of any funds coming back in was incurred. So most of it is due to some of these Chromebooks and related switches and connections to support them. That's a basic overview of the, of the budget for May. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them or record them and, and get to answers.
So at this time, if any board members have questions. I know I just had a quick question, Dr. Willitt. In terms of the negotiations for the secretaries, you said that was completed. So I'm assuming that we're going to see that soon?
Yes.
Okay. Just, I wasn't sure if it was like final stages or we're actually seeing it. So.
No, it's, it is, and chair, chairperson BSaw can also comment on that, but we, yes, we're, we're, we're at the end.
Perfect. Let's go to Griffin.
Thank you, Ashley. Dr. Willitt, I just had two quick questions. Did we get the excess cost sharing grant? Did that come in yet?
We, we have received the excess cost grant. I don't, I can't remember whether it got posted before this got closed. And I'm trying to recall that. And so I can let, I can check tomorrow or when the business manager gets back, but it was more than we expected.
I was looking at the line by, you know, five sixty, the tuition education agency. And it is a significant change from last month. So that's why I was asking if that, that ended up getting posted. So it looks like we have a balance of five twenty seven and last month we had two thirty six. So that's why I was, I'm wondering if it ended up there.
Probably, but I would want to check first to make sure.
Okay.
Because that can also be the result of tuitions that we ended up not using and that were returned to us. So it's probably a combination of, of a couple of things there. But we did receive more than we had anticipated in excess costs.
Thank you. And my other question was the other funds that we were getting from way back in the beginning of the school year that we were putting towards Chromebooks and all that. Has any of that actually come through in, you know, cash basically yet? That is reflected somewhere here.
Yeah, it did. The, the, you mean, like the grants we received sort of.
I can't remember all of the.
Yeah, ERF, you know, ERF. ERFS. They have and they've been sort of distributed through the lines. I think there's a couple of lines that it did come back into, but I would have to check with the business manager director to, to tell me exactly which lines, but I know quite a bit of it at this point did come back.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And there's a little bit more to come too, because I wrote one that I think should give us another ten thousand at some point here.
I'm just going to confirm too, in terms of the salaries for the summer program, that is the S R funds, correct?
The salaries for the extended school year program, we had money set aside for an extended school year program because it's part of every year. It's just that it was a much more limited version. It was mainly for students of special education. And it was a far fewer kids and it was fewer weeks. So the S R funds will be covering above and beyond what we hadn't already budgeted. Yes. It, you know, and in most of that is incurred in the next fiscal year.
Okay. Perfect. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, let's move on to H three, the safe return to in-person instruction.
Okay, so this is, I'm gonna have to kind of toggle up here a little bit. Here we go. So if you'll take a quick look at, and this for the, for anyone at home, this is on the superintendent's page. I'll navigate to it so you can see exactly where it is. You go to district superintendent. Superintendent Willitt, and it's in the bulletins and newsletters. It is this item right here. The town public school safe return to in-person continuity of learning page. So this is provided to the Board of Education. To give you a little background on it, the S R three grant that the district is in the process of working through requires that there be a safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan. So for those of you who are about to make fun of me, I did not make up that acronym myself. That acronym was given to us by, by the state and I am just complying with their, their nifty title. But in this case, we, we need to put together a plan in order to receive the funds. So part of that process is putting this together in its form that you see it tonight. And, you know, and this is put together, put to you tonight for our first review. It's going to return again for the June twenty third meeting for another review. And I'll just briefly go through it right now. I won't go through every single page, but this continues to have information added. Yeah, as we go through the next two weeks, but fundamentally it will be the same with respect to what this document does. So this is meant to replace next year, the document that, the documents that have existed because things are now different. And so you can get a sense of it through, you know, it's got a kind of narrower scope than prior documents. The introduction is really the main thing that will be changing between this and the next one. And so, you know, that's just essentially me just talking in a narrative about the new school year and then some of the rationale and then maybe citing some of the research. But the rest of it will remain roughly the same. The sections are, are sections provided. You know, to, that are provided to me to comply with so that the grant can be granted to us for S R three. So you'll see the headings are mostly those that are part of that compliance. Health and safety strategies, just starting out with who your compliance liaisons are, district wide, that's me. It's the principals for the other buildings. Universal and correct wearing of masks. This is a statement that, you know, wear masks are required. Students and staff must wear face coverings or masks that completely cover the nose and mouth, et cetera. And so the concept of whether masks will be allowed to or students that are vaccinated will be allowed to go without them is something we would like to see put into this. However, that will require that the state and DPH allow it. So that's why you'll notice the language is should the state allow it? Students who submitted proof of vaccination to the town public school system through the nurse's office and/or public firearms or who is our nurse director will not be required to wear masks. Whether that can remain in the, in the plan or not will rely heavily on ultimately what the DPH allows. So it's here right now in anticipation, but it may have to be modified based on, on what the DPH and CDC ultimately require of us. You'll also note that as we go through this, that's where the articulations will come. If something changes in the next two weeks and there is a articulation from the Department of Public Health, I will include that articulation or further articulation here. And I'll include a lot more links to these sources so people can see, you know, where to look for where the changes are coming from. Physical distancing, again, you know, now we're changing the language to maintain social distancing without a specification. So when required, students will have to maintain social distancing. What ultimately that specification is may change. Right now, you know, one from six to three, that kind of thing. We're going to have to see where that ends up, but right now, you know, it may be that we're, we're still required to maintain some level of social distancing. And if that's the case, then when required, we will be doing that. Hand washing and respiratory etiquette, for whatever reason, the grant wants to make sure that I remind America, Connecticut and our community of of the need to wash your hands. So it is here. Please, you know, wash your hands, sanitize. You know, and, and in case anyone wasn't quite sure how to wash your hands, we have step by step instructions to help in compliance with washing our hands. So other things like the, you know, please generally the etiquette, you know, if you're coughing and sneezing, do it into your elbow, not on your best friend, that kind of thing. Cleaning and maintenance, health facilities, ventilation, we have regular cleaning schedules, efficient cleaning technologies, sanitizing stations. Building temperature thresholds and ventilation requirements. All these things are covered and explained in the plan as to how we are going to maintain those standards and make sure that we're in compliance. S one five contact tracing explains that we will be executing contact tracing as provided by the guidelines and directives of the Eastern Highland Health District and the Connecticut Department of Public Health. You'll notice in here that it says students and staff who are fully vaccinated will be not, will not be subjected to quarantine unless otherwise directed by the aforementioned authorities. So if a student or staff member is vaccinated and that proof is that are, you know, in the nurse's office or in our records, they will not be quarantining anymore. Neither will staff. As per what's available right now, unless something were to change or we were to be ordered to do something differently. Diagnostic screening and testing. If there are any unvaccinated students attending school, you know, we, we will be able to test staff and we are currently applying to have the ability to test students. So if a child has a cold, we may be and hopefully can in our own school system provide a rapid PCR test. So a child would not be sent out on quarantine if that cold was shown not to be a COVID related cold. Sometimes kids, you know, have cold and they weather it and they stay in school, trying not to cough on each other. And so diagnostic screening and testing, the district is looking to be able to do that internally. So we don't have to ask parents to go to labs or to go to, you know, X outside areas. And that will help parent guardians with their own family lives, but it will also help return kids faster. If for whatever reason they're not vaccinated. There is a possibility that kids at a certain age level will not be able to be vaccinated. And that's why, you know, we need to have that capacity for testing. Because the children who are of an age group who, who cannot be vaccinated will still be subject to those quarantines and things like that. So if we're able to give them a rapid PCR and it comes back negative, they can come back to school sooner rather than being out for ten days. And so that's the objective there. We do not anticipate there being many kids who actually have to be out in quarantine. That's hopeful. And it's the statistics of vaccinations were going up. One thing I've been asked to remind people of from the DPH is that vaccinations will be what makes schooling in person next year. So, you know, please get vaccinated, please get your kids vaccinated. By vaccinating the kids, we will be able to maintain in-person schooling and they ask us to remind that. Remind everybody of that. Continuity of services, services to address students' academic needs, you know, general comments and statements about that. You know, what resources are available for mental health, emotional health. Food services considerations, you can read these on your own. But these are basically saying that we are back into normal operational status for these food services. Similarly, we expect to go back to just what we're doing now, really, normal operational status. If we did end up having to, you know, end up having to do something different, then we would make adaptations and make sure food was available for families much as we did this year. And the state funding and so on would be important part of that as it was this year. Determination of education options. So keep, keep in mind and, and note that town public schools plans to provide full in-person learning on the typical school's calendar and schedule. That's available by clicking in the document. You can see the calendar and the schedules for the district. The Talon Public Schools will not offer remote learning as an option for students through its general education programming. The state of Connecticut is saying that it will be providing remote learning for students to qualify. And so there will be a process articulated likely during the summer that will, that will illustrate what the qualifications are. You know, what one has to do to be qualified for the state's remote learning program. And if they are, then they could attend that remote program, but the talent public schools will not be offering a remote program next year. In the event that other models, learning must be considered due, due to pandemic conditions. Then we would have to go into the education model determination again, and the process for doing that is illustrated here. Stakeholder engagement, we will have periodic reviews of this document and this process. So the Board of Education is reviewing it tonight, will also be reviewing it June twenty third and December twenty second, twenty twenty one and June twenty second, twenty twenty two and December fourteenth, twenty twenty two and June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. You will be sick of my acronyms by the time we get done with reviewing this document all the way through twenty twenty three. But that, this document will be reviewed on a roughly six month, six month. You know, period of time. And, you know, we'll have the, the opportunity to, to then also make adjustments and provide feedback. The purpose of these is to provide feedback to which then I would make an adjustment if so, if, if necessary and if advisable. Most of what I can or can't do, once again, will be dictated by the Department of Public Health and the Eastern Highland Health District. Understanding uniform format, basically this is section that says we will be offering a Spanish version. And we will also be offering translations upon request. Open forums, we will be having open forums, the superintendent's community forum will be will be monthly and people can access and ask questions at that time as well as every board meeting and public participation and so on. The forums do give an opportunity for a longer conversation and more in-depth questioning than your standard public session board meeting, simply because of the time limit that's necessary for, you know, for those kinds of structures. So this is, you know, the opportunity for people to really get an extrapolated answer, that type of thing. Planned use of ARP funds. So right now, presenting this to the board. Among the most heavily impacted populations from the pandemic were students in the early elementary grades. And that is where we're noticing some of the most profound impacts. So as such, the S R ARP funds will be utilized to increase staff at this level for a duration of three years. So for fiscal year twenty two, this is what it would look like. You'd likely have nine in kindergarten to try to significantly reduce the class sizes. Because they went through a year and this was, this age was the hardest and least able to adapt. You know, we need to put an increased amount of attention on their needs because they're the group that was hurt the most frankly. So this would, this would provide the class sizes you see here. So by adding an additional additional staff and, and then it would, we would reevaluate each year and shift those staff around. We would be doing it for a duration of three years and we would be adding one additional staff to kindergarten and and an additional staff to grade two for fiscal year twenty two. And then we would shift those resources around as needed. This would provide a class size of sixteen roughly in average in kindergarten, twenty in grade one and twenty two in, in grade two. And that would be adding two through the use of S R A R P funds. And again, that would be for a period of three years and it would be rotated based on the need in each of those three years. For fiscal year 23 and 24, like it says here, they would be, you know, adjusted. The estimated cost of three years of three staff would be about 324,000. The remaining 137,000 of the ARPS or two would be for extended school year and extended school, extended school day programs. An example of that is, you know, as you know, this extended school year this year is, is an addition of two weeks, roughly 200 kids and all the transportation that that embodies and things like that. So that also is within compliance with the state's requirement that 20% of all SR ARP funds be used for learning loss. 20% of the full number would be about 92,000. So this 137 is not only the learning loss funds, but also it includes some of the other pieces, you know, to address learning loss as well. So we would, you know, we would be doing even more extensive work. And it could end up meaning at the high school for the first time, some SRB RTI tier two services, which the high school has not had for some time. And so that would be, you know, it could be a skinny block, but it would be, this is basically a special block for students at the high school to be able to get support in math and English, language arts and so on. There's a variety of learning loss strategies that we're using that I went over in the FFC meeting last week, I think it was. And, you know, those will be somewhat further articulated here, but they are in those minutes as well or should be, you know, listed or talked about there a bit. So, and I can provide more details on that to anyone who wants to know. The district COVID response team, the, as you know, we've had a COVID response team. These are the members of the COVID response team. And, and essentially it just talks about, you know, who they are, what the process is and so on. And that COVID response team will remain in force for next year. Until we are told we do not need it anymore. There are appendices to this document. One of them is communications. And what I'll be doing with the remaining appendices is simply providing, you know, data and links that I will then pepper throughout the document. So, you know, when I refer to the DPHs, information about mask wearing, I will have a link where it bounces us down to the appendices so that people can, you know, see that information through a quick click hyperlink versus trying to go out in the internet to find it. So this is the first draft of the safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan for the Talon Public Schools. And you will be seeing it again on the 23rd in its updated form. And it will be submitted that night to, to the state so that we are in compliance with the Esser two, Esser three ARP requirement. And, and thereby doing that, we can receive the funding and continue with the grant.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Willett. That was a ton of information to review and to go through and to just put it together on here. You know, at this time I'm going to have the board members, just so that you know, Sarah, you can speak during the public participation again. But at this time, when the meeting's going through, it's only for board members. So at this time I'd like to go to Plord. Oh, you just took your hand down.
Yeah, I'm just going to think for a few more minutes and then I'll raise it back up. Thanks.
Okay, I know it is definitely a lot of information and that I have so many notes and it's like, I just kind of want to absorb it first because it's just a lot. So Madhu?
Thank you. Yeah, it is a lot to go through. One question I did have was about the option for remote learning. Is the state going the basic route of, you know, I guess for qualifications for it? Is it basically just, it has to be a medical reason or do you know if they're opening up for other reasons?
We're hoping to get further articulation on that. My, my read of it right now is that it would be for exceptional circumstances such as those that might be used to justify an accommodation like a 504. You know, it's something that would prevent the young adult or child from attending in person and that a medical doctor or someone would provide documentation through which this determination would then be made and they would qualify for the state's remote program. Another way that this might occur is districts may be required to buy into one and they know crack would offer it type of thing. But, but the state has said that it was going to provide it. So they have about 14 weeks to come true on that and, you know, and we'll see what happens there.
Right, that was it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madhu. Let's go to Tony.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. And I guess my questions are focused mainly on the process. If I, if I heard you correctly, this is the first read. So the next meeting will be the second read and then you're going to have to relatively quickly turn that around, submit that.
That night.
That night. So as far as any comments or concerns, do you have similar to the budget process, a page up or would you like those emailed beforehand so you can gather your information for that? Or how do you get it turned as quickly as you, as you need it?
Yep, the best place to go for that, and I have, and there's a reference in the document to contact. In this, in this case, the contact me site, and I would use the, I would, I would use the, the process here that people feel most comfortable with, but a general question. And this link right here is something that will help get the information to me as soon as, you know, it's submitted. It's something that will be, will be pretty quick. So that's a good thing. In people can articulate their question and then we can use it to, to adapt the document. So they can look through and try any of those contact me options, but this one providing and submitting this question through this, this form, this will, this will give people a, you know, an opportunity to get it in within a span of time of, of a few days and we'll see it within a few days. Versus sometimes if it's just set to the general email address, it can take quite a while before it's seen. So again, I'll kind of walk through that. One can go to superintendent's page, contact me, and this would be the general submission of a question. This can be where people submit that. And it'll come up with the form and they can provide, you know, their articulations and their questions, that kind of thing. So there's no wrong way to do it, but this would be a way of providing that feedback. Another thing is I will take notes in public session and, you know, and work to, to do what I can with what people provide in public session as well. One thing to keep in mind is that my hands will be tied somewhat by what is, what we are allowed to do. So someone might say to me, well, you know, I think everybody should wear face shields, for instance. I demand that we wear face shields. Unless the DPH requires that we wear face shields, if there's no medical reason or requirement from the DPH EHD or state, then that might not make it into the document. Because it's not a requirement of the DPH EHD or whatever. Or if it contradicts something that the DPH or EHD or state says must be there, I won't be able to take it out, that type of thing. So, you know, I'll make what modifications I can to it. And it's a, it, you know, it's available for public feedback. But again, it's one of those situations where people can all have a say, but not necessarily everyone get their way because the way will largely be what is allowed. And so, you know, that, that's just a, something to think about with respect to the processes. You know, this is a compliance process for S or three. And we have to stay within the parameters of what, you know, what that means. I can't violate the DPH and still comply with the S or three ARP grant. So.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Sophia Johnson, just so you know, this time is only for board members. You can speak during the public participation because at this point we just have board of, the board of ed. We don't have town council crossover unless it's a town council ordeal. Let's go down to Plord.
Thank you, Ashley. And thank you, Dr. Willett, for putting this together. As you can probably tell, my hair is on fire right now, a little fired up when I read things like this. Because I do understand where people are coming from, where, you know, we, we've stayed home and stayed safe for so long. You know, and now that the most vulnerable are vaccinated, you know, we're continuing to treat our kids in a way that really, I mean, it's tough on them. I have a kindergartner, it's tough. So I guess my questions will revolve around this SR three grant, the ARP grant. Does this, does anything in here go beyond the requirements set by the state of Connecticut? For like, for instance, let's say the state said you didn't have to wear masks or the kids didn't have to wear masks if they're vaccinated. Does this require more than what the state has? And you don't have to answer that now.
I can't, no, no, it doesn't. In fact, what I tried to do with this is bend to what I have heard was available. So for instance, the statement that people who are vaccinated don't have to wear masks, that's actually a reach because that hasn't been okayed yet in an official sense. I'm saying that, you know, that that's what I've heard and so it's incorporated right now. But there hasn't been an official statement that that's what the state of Connecticut or the DPH will allow. The only thing that they've said on it at all, the only person who seems to have commented directly on that right now is the national level Fauci saying that the vaccinated group, AKA the 12 year olds and above may not, or he, you know, the way he words it is something around the lines of, you know, you know, there's a possibility that, and that's kind of how he says it. So it's incorporated here for all kids, but actually on the national level, it was made, the statement was really for the vaccinated's of 12 and above. This is in, in anticipation that the summer will include a Pfizer vaccination for all kids. And so that, you know, that's roughly why it's there that way.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, as we go forward with this, you know, it doesn't mandate things just to get a grant. I guess that's where I was going with that.
Yeah, no, it'll, it'll mandate things to be in compliance, but that compliance will be pointing, they'll point back at each other. You know, Esser will say, are you in compliance with DPH kind of deal?
And then not, not to get, you know, national with vaccines, but I mean, with the kids, I mean, talking to the pediatrician, you know, when the adults get vaccinated, you know, we don't have to treat our kids this way. And that's what I'm not mad at you and just, I just get fired up about it because I think, you know, there's probably kids that have already had COVID, you know, and they still have to continue to wear a mask and not play with their peers. And it's just hard on them. So thank you for keeping me on the committee. You know, very vocal. I just see things like ventilation, you know, we're increasing the runtime, you know, the remote learning, if we're going to continue to quarantine kids, I don't see how we could, you know, is, is my son going to stay home for 10 days and get nothing? I mean, that's.
No, well, the, the hope, the hope there is that if your son can't be vaccinated, that the school will have testing. So if your son, for instance, feels kind of, you know, unwell, that he will go down to the nurse and be tested immediately. So he would go home for having a cold, but because we can test him internally, he wouldn't be put out for 10 days if it's not COVID.
And what's the opinion on, because I know now you can buy a COVID test at, you know, CVS for 40 bucks. What's the opinion on home testing, you know, if my kid has a sniffle, you know, before sending them in?
Yeah, they, I, I don't know the answer to that. The one, the, the bulk eye that I have heard, you know, was on the testing our nurses can provide. So they haven't, I think, come up with a real determination about those at-home tests with respect to allowing access to school. But the idea here would be that even if a child's not vaccinated, they're feeling kind of sick. They get tested from the school, they can go home because they're not well, but they don't have to stay out for 10 days if the test shows that it's not COVID. And so it would greatly cut down on any quarantine, even for a child who was not vaccinated. But the DPH is encouraging very strongly that everyone get vaccinated because it's the only way to prevent some of these mass quarantines for, you know, variants and other things that could become part of next year if we're not careful. So they, they reiterated repeatedly last Tuesday that, you know, the only way to in-person learning sustained is for vaccinations to be, you know, ubiquitous. So that it's just a constant refrain from them.
Thank you. My hair is still on fire, but I'll do it in a positive way.
I do have a quick question in terms of what she had asked. Because to be perfectly honest, from June to December, I mean, things shift so quickly. I mean, how, what happens if we are in, not in compliance because of however you wrote this up? I mean, that's a large timeframe.
Well, you know, it, it's, it's to be revisited because I, I guess this is their timeline. They want six month increments. You know, with respect to kind of, when we kind of look at it again. And, and that may, that must be for some reason that, you know, frankly, I don't know exactly why, but it's probably what they would expect to be shifts would be, you know, would probably be in such increments. Anywhere that I do anything in this document, it's going to have to be connected to in language as made available by or made possible by or within the guidelines of the DPH, the EHD. So even if I do say that, you know, students that are vaccinated wouldn't have to wear a mask, for instance, it'll be caveated with as permitted by. So, you know, if the DPH changes their guidance, then we would have to do what they're permitting. So the document would still be accurate. It's just frankly, there's no other way to do that. You know, the, they have the complete control. So executive order 12A, for instance, ends, I think on July 20th. If in another executive order is, is, you know, is provided, we've got to shift, you know, and do whatever the executive order says. And that's not a new thing. The, at the beginning of this year, the, the state was saying one thing and then they completely shifted with respect to their thresholds and what was acceptable. You may be, you know, you may remember for those who are tuning in way back at the beginning that 25 kids put us in the red, you know, in, in a, in a zone of 100,000. And that quickly went away and that became not a red zone thing. As this, as people, as the, as time progressed, the state changed how it required and how it looked at it. And so we can expect some similar things that, you know, the state may change how they look at it. So everything in here has to be caveated with, provided the state, you know, allows it through this guideline or, you know, these requirements.
I just want, like I said, I just wanted to know because I mean, things shift so quickly. So that's why I just off the top of my head, I mean, I'm like six months, that's a long time. And, you know, we go one month and next thing you know, it's like 100, well, 180. So that's just comes to mind.
I mean, the one thing, just to caveat on that is the difference is the vaccinations. So we had a year, a whole year that had a tremendous number of, of changes and changes in the requirements. And that's why the meetings were every week on Tuesdays because literally there would be something different every week. Having said that, the vaccinations are supposed to be the stabilizing element here so that that doesn't happen. That's the, that's the rationale behind the state's approach. So these documents will be much more generalized because they aren't expecting dramatic changes so long as everyone, you know, as, as maximum number of people in all age groups that are permitted get vaccinated.
Let's go to Sophia.
I was wondering, and perhaps you answered this previously, is there a cost to our district for the students that choose remote learning? And if there is, is it based on the percentage of children that, that will buy into that or how will that work?
Well, there's not supposed to be. It's supposed to be that that state plan is offered as a remote option at no cost. However, we really won't know until we're actually at that point. We really won't know until we're actually at that point. One other possibility is the state could say, you must reallocate. You know, you know, we'll provide you the resources, but you have to allocate a person. And that's, I hope not what happens. That's not what is supposed to happen. They're supposed to provide the remote option. But, you know, like anything else, the only two things you can really count on in life are death and taxes. Um, and you know, what the state does. It, it could fluctuate. Now, most people don't expect it to, but it's possible.
Anything else, Sophia, you. Uh, let's go to Tony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had one quick question, Dr. Willett. On the scenario you were saying, I think it was, uh, Ms. Plord. Uh, with the in-school PCR tests that we're hoping to have available. That be something that would require parental permission?
Yes.
Or would you have that on record? I mean, how would that actually be implemented conceptually?
You'd have to have the parent give their permission and, um, and if they did, the test could be administered. Um, it really would be just easier for a parent to do that than say. Go bring them to whatever testing center, you know, is that urgent care or something? So um, they would have to give their consent. If they didn't give consent and it cannot be determined that it is not COVID. And they have not gotten or shown proof of vaccination. Then those children would be subject to quarantine to the maximum number of days as is specified by the DPH, which is currently 10. Um, and there is another version, what could be, you know, eight, but probably 10.
Thank you, sir.
So I, I did have a question about um, quarantining. If someone does have to quarantine for 10 days, let's say permission isn't given to have a test done at a, at a school. And they are quarantined for 10 days. Do they then go into the remote learning option offered by the state or how do they, how do we do that?
Well, they, they, they could probably, um, there may be an option for segueing temporarily to remote learning from the state. Um, but if they are, so this is where the rubber hits the road on the philosophy about this. So far, what it looks like is the philosophy is that. If a person chooses not to get vaccinated and chooses not to get a rapid test. Those are choices that mean that the child will then have to be out for those 10 days. Uh, because these are the choices that the parent guardian or family is making. So it's not saying that there wouldn't be supplemental work sent home by the teacher, that they would not be having remote access. It would be like, um, you know, if a teacher sends home some supplemental work for a child who's sick. It would be along the same lines as what would be done in a typical year if the child got the flu. If a child got the flu for two weeks and was out for two weeks because of the flu. Um, a teacher would provide some work provided the child felt well enough to do it. But it will not be the synchronous remote learning that you saw during the pandemic. So that it's not like you discard the situation, but they would be treated more like the flu, a child who had the flu.
Like if it was more prolonged illness, like in a case like that.
Yeah, you know, and if a child's out for the flu, you know, they, they, they're given some work to do at home so long as they feel well enough to do it. It would be the same kind of scenario.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, let's give Plord a chat because Tony, you already talked twice, so Plord.
I was just gonna say, Dr. Willett.
Is your hair still on fire?
Yes.
I just wanted to.
But I just wanted to say, I know it's not on fire because of you. I know what's in this document is to adhere to. Certain guidelines and, and certain things from the state and national government. Um, and so I can't necessarily change all those things, but um, thank you for putting this together. Um, and that's all I had. Tony, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Tony.
Yep, that, that's it. I, I'm thinking of nothing else. But I, I guess I'm just sitting here trying to run through the, the policies in my head that could be affected. And I know, Dr. Willett, you're probably, you, you've probably done this or in the process of, I guess, I'm just curious. Now, have we thought then that next step, would those absences then necessarily fall into the, you know, the allowed absences? Uh, policy or the?
Yeah, I think what's really gonna happen now is that the, the state's regulations and, and requirements reassert themselves. And somebody who's probably, you know, who's home ill, with, that gets excused if it is an, if it is a verified illness. So, you know, if we know that a child is ill and it's verified by a medical person. That is an excused absence versus, versus strictly verified absence. If a UFO lands in your backyard and you decide to have a picnic with all the aliens and that's gonna be three days out of school. That's a verified absence. The, the district would log it as something that the parent called in, but it's not excused. Whereas if a child's sick for three days, goes to the nurse and it's obvious they're sick. Then um, that, that could be through a medical professional like the nurse or a doctor's note. That, that then is a excused and it doesn't count against them. But if, you know, you do have a certain number of threshold absences, the state then requires us to act on. Um, so typically people will get um, letters home at the fifth absence, you know, the ninth absence. If a person has more than 20, if a child has more than 20 absences in a year. And they're of even a verified kind, then we have to go into a different mode of operation and, and. In that type of thing. That will be reasserting itself. So the state's requirements will come back into play next year. And so everything that people typically experience with attendance will be back and they'll be experiencing it again. Um, but if a child is sick and there is medical documentation or verification of that. Then those are excused and those don't count against uh, that max number the same way.
Okay.
So none of that really, COVID becomes much more like the flu.
Just to use your brief example, you know, if we're writing a document that says what we plan on doing if the alien lands in our yard. Uh, my assumption is then we need to make sure that we are, you know, we've got our ducks in a row as far as that alien.
Yeah, the, 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 you know, colorful euphemism there of the alien means that. Uh, parent guardians can literally have a child out for almost any reason, as long as they say to the school they know where they are. But that only, uh, that's only allowed to a certain threshold, AKA say 10. And then if it goes past that, then it's looked at as them keeping them away from schooling. So um, really what I'm trying to say here with probably two colorful languages. Everything that used to be in, in, uh, in place will be back in place. So there really won't be, from what I can tell, any exemptions. And so we wouldn't necessarily need any new policy because our policies are aligning with what the state had in place. Um, for attendance.
We, we may, we'll, we'll talk to some in committee.
Okay, um, Griffin?
Thank you, Ashley. Um, I'm sorry, um, I'm trying to still comprehend all this. So my hair is not quite as on fire as much as Plord's, but it's getting there. So I guess my only question would be, you know, we're clearly at the mercy of the state, just as we were. Or just as we have been for, for so long. Is there anything we as a board can do? Especially for the mask wearing and how this is going to play out come September? Is there anything you think that would be helpful that we can do as a board to, you know, to have some of this stuff lifted? This just seems so difficult, especially for the K through five unvaccinated population. So that's my only question. Is there anything we can do, do you think?
Yeah, um, I'm just pulling it up right now. The, I would contact the Connecticut Department of Public Health. Um, if you have an opinion, these are the people who control this. This and the state of Connecticut. Um, you know, I'm looking at their site here. I just loaded it up for your perusal, but I'm looking for a contact number and. You know, sometimes these, those are difficult to find. But um, the, the people that are really controlling where this goes are, are the Department of Public Health. Um, and organizations like that in the, in the EHHD.
Just to clarify, we, we probably shouldn't do it individually or we should do it individually. Or should we come to a consensus of a, of an email uh, from the whole board?
It can be, uh, it can be all of the above. Um, it can be all the above. If the board wants to send a. You know, we have, I have done that before where the board gives me direction and I'll author a document, give it to the board for perusal. You approve it and then I send it on behalf of the Board of Education for Talent to the legislators, to the Department of Public Health, et cetera. Um, sometimes you'll find that people in government will say a certain thing. And then DPH will have a different take on it. Um, and so unless it's an executive order or a law, DPH will be able to. Influence the, anything that is not codified in law or executive order. Um, they'll reflect most of what's in law and executive order. But if there is no law and executive order, then what they say outside of that also goes. So it's just, um, and you don't ever want to be on the legal side of not following the DPH if something were to happen. Because they'll say you ignored the directives and guidelines of the DPH, et cetera. So there's a couple of reasons why DPH is one of the major players here. So Connecticut's DPH. Would be a, a good place to focus your energy if you wanna influence the decision-making. And they're the ones that, um, you know, superintendents, we have the meetings with the DPH on Tuesdays. We literally get our direction from them in those meetings and, and articulations in those meetings. Incidentally, they're actually now discontinuing the weekly meetings because the prevalence is going down. Um, they'll probably do them more on a monthly basis or something like that. And it might be just because it's the summer, but I think it also has to do with the, the prevalence.
I will say, Griffin, um, I did like Plord's comment of the communications board taking a look at this. And you ladies can help draft up a letter. I mean, I don't wanna put you guys on the spot. But I do think that that would be great if you two could put this on something and really start. I mean, I feel like we're always saying drafting of a letter because I think we were trying to do one too for, um. The grades not counting on the other. Uh, exam that the students talk and I don't think we've ever actually pushed a, a letter out for that. But I would like to do something in terms of this for the um, Connecticut DPH. So is that something you ladies would uh, like to take on? Have a little thumbs up.
Well, I think we can at least talk about it in our committee and, and see what we, we come up with.
Absolutely, and Tony's with us too. We can't forget him.
The Eastern Highland Health District is also the health district, local district for talent. And um, you can reach out to them too. They're not as powerful as the DPH. They take their direction from the DPH because they're a local health district. But they're also, um, you know, a good resource if you want to express an opinion or get, you know, get, get an answer. They can tell you. Um, you know, why something is a certain way. Um, and that's your Eastern Highland Health District. Um, I'll see if I can pull that up really quick here. Um, just so you can have us, there we go. So this is the Eastern EHHD or Eastern Highland Health District. Um, contact us. You know, these are the people to talk to on your local health district. And the DPH is the, is really the higher authority, but these, these guys are great and they do a great job. There's not many of them in that office, so you might, you know, just be understanding if they can't get back to you like in five minutes, but they are. You know, they're, they're the group that we, we also report to. I can't go astray of the EHHD either, and nor would it be smart to, you know.
Okay, well, I think that we've, um, obviously this is a lot of information to take in and to review. And since this is a first read, we will, once again, have more um, discussion our, our next meeting. I do feel like board members will probably have some more questions for you, Dr. Willett. So in the meantime, um, do you want them still to do the general box or just email you?
Um, board members can just email me. If it's a board member, uh, email me. If you're part of the general public, um, use, you know, use the contact page and, and you can choose your. Choose your method, but the one that will get to me sooner. Um, other than calling my phone number, but the one that would get to me sooner, the one to five days is the, uh, the question here.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Willett. Let's move on to the H4 Education COVID Relief Fund.
Okay. I hate when this, uh. Okay, so this is just a, a review of the COVID Relief Fund. Uh, you may recall that in December of 2020, specifically the 23rd. Um, there was a consideration of the creation of a COVID Relief Fund. It was a, do, it was with funds that had been rolled over at the end of the year. You remember last year's reconciliation document? The Board of Education um, had endorsed a 30, 40, 30 split. And uh, and so 40% of that was going to be rolled over for the creation of a COVID Relief Fund. And to be used for that, um, those items. So um, this was written up, it was endorsed and, and adopted by the town council. And the rules were set up as, as you see on your screen now. Uh, through the contributions, the custody of the funds and use of money and so on. Uh, you recently made a request of this fund, uh, where I went over, uh, the section that was relevant to make that request. So I won't, uh, you know, to, I won't belabor the point on that right now. Um, the main reason for bringing this up in this particular meeting is the duration of agreement. So the status of this agreement and fund shall be reviewed by the Board of Education and Town Council annually between June 1st and September 1st. So, you know, to, uh, at the pleasure of the board and for the review of the board. Um, I'm just pointing out that you have entered the term of the duration conversation. And that we should probably be through one of our chairs. Or, uh, you can instruct me to reach out to the town manager, looking to, um, to set up the process where the board event and the town council. You know, review this so that they can determine whether it should be continued or terminated.
Yeah, I do believe that we were discussing having some funds going into this, so I believe that the board would, um, look to seek to extend the. Um, dates on our agreement. Therefore, um, we can, I can reach out to Tammy to get this. Would this have to be another joint meeting or are they going to put it on to their agenda?
I think, um, you can decide with, uh, the, the chair of the council, um, how to best approach that. You know, and, and, and let us know and, and obviously we'll do everything we can to help. Uh, Mike and I will do whatever we can to help.
Um, would any board members have any opposing thoughts about continuing this? Before I go in, uh, you know, try to. Take the steps to extend it, um, would do? Oh, you are muted.
Alright.
There you go.
Um, is, sorry, um. I guess, you know, do we feel that it needs to be extended? And if so, is there a dollar amount that we're looking for?
Well, you can, um, the, whether it needs to be extended or not, is at the pleasure of the board and the council. Um, the council has the final say and control. Um, and if you are going to continue it, then. When we get to the June reconciliation document on the 23rd, which is what I hope to do, or at least talk about that. I'll give you an idea of what you have for remaining balance and you can give me direction about what split you'd like to have happen there. You know, whether it should be 50 to the ERF at 50% of what's left to, to see, you know, the cor- coronavirus relief fund. But you might wanna have an idea, at least a gentle person's agreement or some understanding between the chair and the chair of the council. Whether that, there's an intention and, uh, there's support for continuing it. Because there's no point in rolling it to, uh, or requesting to roll it to a fund that will no longer exist. So it, it should be a conversation, you know, to get this, to get, um, a sense of whether there's support for this or not. And hopefully that could happen prior to, say, the June 23rd meeting and just a general term, not, not may, not really the official meeting. But at least a, a general sense, then you can decide as a board how you wanna do that end of year balance.
So, I mean, and this may kind of be a stupid question. I, I just don't know the answer to it. Is there a difference between? You know, putting the money in a COVID relief fund versus putting it into an emergency, like the, uh, emergency reserve fund?
So the ERF can be used for three things, capital, special education and technology. Um, the coronavirus fund can be used for anything related to the coronavirus that is.
Like cleaning and, okay.
Personnel, yeah. It's, it's been very helpful this year. Um, it's been very, very helpful this year. Because, uh, there were a lot of things all over the place. Um, and you'll know, you'll notice from the minutes of the last. And you'll know, you'll notice from the minutes of the last meeting that we, you know, we went over the categories of that. There were, there was a P1 and P2 request. And that's been forwarded over to the town now as per process. And one of the things that was in there was food service, you know, getting hit pretty hard. So, you know, it's, it's something that has been very helpful to have. We don't really know with a crystal ball what next year looks like. Hopefully it looks awesome. But if, if there are some continued unanticipated needs, which there, there could definitely be, this kind of thing really does help. The other thing is that if the money is not used the way this is written, it rolls back to your, to your ERF as long as it doesn't exceed the percent that can go into the ERF by ordinance eighty six, chapter eight of the town.
It seems like, I mean, to me, it seems like it would make sense to, to keep it going just because, you know, I mean, if we have to have like a plan of continuance services, you know, I mean, we might as well have the fund to go with it.
I just think that this gives us the opportunity, not because I like, the ERF does have only those three options. Whereas this gives us a little bit more flexibility as how to spend that for whatever our needs might be. So, you know, like Dr. Willett said, I mean, it does, it definitely has come into play and has helped us set costs, you know, that we can go through. You know, so I, I agree that we were already talking about putting some funds in this. I mean, we just don't know when it is a pandemic and what we're going to need. So, you know, by having the funds available and having, you know, not having that strict guidelines of the only three things, yeah, say we need this, we have money that we can use. So then it offsets it and, you know.
Yeah, yeah. You don't, you don't, you don't need to sell me on it. I, I get it. I am with you. I get it.
Well, let's hear from FFC here. She's got her hand raised. Let's go, let's see.
Ashley, you sure you don't want to be Chair of FFC also? Because that's what I was going to say is what you just said, that there's really no risk to not continuing the fund. Because if we, for whatever reason, don't use the money for COVID, which would be fantastic, it will automatically get rolled into our ERF. But the COVID Relief Fund gives us a little bit more flexibility with what we can use the money for compared to the ERF. So I certainly am in support of it. And in a future meeting, you know, we can have the discussion about the percentages and how we want to see it split. But I'm certainly in support of continuing the CRF. So, thank you.
Thank you, Griffin. Let's go to Rini.
I just want to, you know, pile onto that a little bit. I'm also in support of keeping it at least for the, you know, well, at least one more year till we see, you know, kind of how things go. And then, you know, we can evaluate again in the following year. But for now, it, it already seems like there's potential things that we wouldn't know about that may be COVID related that we might need the money for. So I, I'm in support of requesting the Town Council to allow us to extend at least one year at this point.
Okay, I could do a formal request, asking them for a one-year extension on there. I'm not sure how the Town Council, if they vote on that or how, what the next step would be. But I think that that would probably be assumed to just write to her and request a one-year extension, correct?
Yeah, you definitely, and again, you can, you can decide with her, but I think that that is one way of doing it that may be very expeditious.
Okay, and then she can bring it to the Town Council if they have that discussion.
Yeah, I mean, you could, someone could make a motion right now to, to request that the council continue the fund. And then you would have a vote and a motion on that. So you would have done your board part on, you know, the board side of it will have officially reviewed it. That's totally up to you. And this is really.
No, I like, I like that where we're going with this. So I would entertain a motion to put this as board action under K2.
I'll rate up a motion for you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, extension of the Education COVID Relief Fund. One year.
Christina Plord, I make a motion to move the extension of the COVID Relief Fund to board action as K2.
Do, and do you can tell a second?
Okay, any discussion? Let's do the vote. Rini?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Madu?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Lord?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
I'm a I as well. So we will put this down for a action as K2. And Dr. Will, you will write up. Perfect. Thank you, guys. I think that's the best, the best solution to this. I think going forward, it kind of just helps us out. So let's move on to the committee in liaison reports. Monday had the mental health, correct, Madu? Well, you are muted. Yes, Speaker, correct?
Yes, Dr. Will was kind enough to grace with his time along with Reverend Gallagher. It was, it was, it was a long and in-depth conversation. We have a lot to go over. We're going to end up splitting into two groups. One's going to focus on prevention and then the other is going to focus on, you know, treatment options and what we offer. But no, again, and thank you so much, Dr. Willett. It was, it was, it was very helpful for you to be there. I think, I think some of the stuff that we talked about, you know, were things that we hadn't even thought about. And it's exactly why, you know, we need to talk to people.
That's perfect. And do you guys have anything for curriculum?
Um, yeah, we, I don't have the meeting agenda in front of me. I thought Jake would be here to do it. But we, we did meet. We talked about, hold on, I can't even remember what we talked about. So basically, yes, we met. I know we talked about pathways. We talked about pandemic, the current pandemic situation. We talked more along
Personal, personal finance, you had a.
Yep, we had the personal finance teacher come in and talk to us about, you know, the pros and cons of, you know, what the, what, what the curriculum looked like in the pros and cons of, of making it a a permanent, or like a mandatory class. And then, yeah, we talked about pathways and discussion on basic trades courses.
And learning, learning loss too. I think I, I might have said that was an FFC, but that was in curriculum that we talked about learning loss.
So that was also another jam-packed meeting.
Well, thank you, Madu. It seems as though that we're keeping you busy over here.
Yep, wouldn't have it any other way.
Thank you so much. Okay, so let's see what else we have. Rini, I didn't want to take your thunder away for the negotiations, but can we get an update?
I'm fearful that the cat is out of the bag already. And, you know, Dr. Willett has, you know, come screaming in with the good news that we did come to an agreement. But I do think we're maybe waiting for them to have it back to a signed type thing.
We are. It's, it has to go to their, their union for a vote.
Right. So we're at that stage, but we did come to an agreement. So we're happy about that. They do a great job for us and very important to the whole operation of the district. So we're happy to have come to an agreement with that.
Thank you so much. I mean, I hate to take that away from you because I know that negotiations, you can never say anything.
But, you know, it's okay.
Okay. Let's see, I have Birch Grove. Dana?
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. So I have quite a bit and I'll just kind of go as, as I can. So the Birch Grove Primary Project is on budget, on time. The school looks fantastic. I don't know if any of you guys have had a chance to drive by and check it out. We're going to continue to meet weekly until further discussions are had, obviously for change orders and, and stuff like that that's time sensitive. We don't have an ETA for the proposed Town Council or Board of Ed or Birch Grove Primary Committee walkthroughs. Unfortunately, this is determined by the property managers and future communication is going to be, I'm going to have to keep you guys in the loop as, as that progresses. Basically, there is some stuff that's going to be coming, hopefully brought to our next scheduled meeting on the 23rd about a presentation to the full board about the playscape and the swing set and how that impacts the playscape. So a couple of things, I just want you guys to be on the lookout from getting the correspondence or information from either Katie Murray or Dr. Willett in regards to that. It's possible we may not receive the packet until on Monday. So what is that, the 21st, correct, Dr. Willett? So it's possible that we might not get the packet itself, the full construction packet for the playscape until two days before our meeting. I did speak to Katie and we're trying to work on giving the layout. Some documentation, some, less than the construction packet for us prior to that, the week prior, if we can. She's working diligently with tomato to get a condensed version so that we can at least get a peek at that, at the layout and the, the sketch and what the, the goal is. The paperwork, the document is really the, that she's going to be, won't get till Monday is pretty much applicable to the construction team only. But the overall bottom line is, we'll be provided a site plan, the location of the swing set that's going adjacent to the playground, that it's a five base swing set, ten swings in total. Two of them are going to be accommodating for students of a variety of needs. And again, like I said, Katie's working really hard to get that to us sooner. We, it will be, the committee will need to bring it to the Board of Ed or Katie and myself will need to bring it to the Board of Ed for, to approve the proposal to include the swing set as a part of the quote unquote full campus package under the forty-six million dollar budget. So by approving that, we're approving the proposal to include the swing set as a part of that. But we're just approving the plan so that the state can review it and determine whether or not the swing set is eligible for reimbursement or not. So that's really, that's a huge caveat on it. You know, it's going to be brought to us so we can approve it. So they can send it to the state so we can find out if it's actually reimbursable. The swing set, whether it goes in or not, is under the purview of the Birch Grove Building Committee within the forty-six million dollar budget. Again, we're just approving or reviewing the, the packet for eligibility only, the application. The reason why I bring this up is because everything's coming so fast and furious with the BGP. So it will be something that we will need to act upon quickly. And the window of us getting the information and reviewing it and then talking about it at a meeting is miniscule. So what I will say is, we do need to act on it promptly because it will help mitigate costs in the future. Potentially putting a new swing set in the future, post, post BGP build. But the, the goal is to provide a swing set to provide the full educational needs for all children of Birch Grove Primary. So, and it's the most fiscally responsible one. I think I hit it all. Dr. Willett, do you have anything that I missed? Or Katie, is Katie on the meeting?
I think you did a good job.
Okay, I don't know if Katie is here. She said she was going to try.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I don't know if you have anything to add, Katie, or did I miss anything?
I think you got it.
Okay.
We're, we're cruising along.
But since we have you here, you know, I was going to say, if any board members have any additional questions too, you know, just in case. Okay, because I saw some thinking faces. So I didn't, wasn't sure. I was going to take the opportunity. So, anything else, Katie, or?
No, Dana got it. I'll be back next week, or I'm sorry, at your next meeting, assuming that we do have the swing set packet ready to go then. So that I can answer any questions you might have about the swing set packet.
Perfect. It sounds like our twenty-third meeting is going to be quite the packed, jam-packed agenda. Perfect. Thank you, guys. Is there any other liaison reports that I'm missing at this time? I don't believe that anybody else met. FFC waits. So I'm good. Okay. Chairperson's report. I'm lucky to be here tonight in one piece. So we are good to go. I feel like this summertime, as soon as the stuff rolls around, it's like, it's time just flies really quick. And you're like, oh, my gosh, it's already Wednesday. So let's go to board action. And Dr. Willett, if you could, let's discuss this.
So the AASA is, basically is an organization for administration and superintendents. The AASA offers a national certification program. So the program is, you know, this is the program narrative. If you were to go to the AASA site and click on National Superintendent Certification Program, this is roughly the narrative that you would see. This is truncated a little bit because it goes on for a few pages. But, so, you know, it essentially is a program for superintendents that, that have had some experience and want to, to work collaboratively in a training, in a series of trainings to, you know, enhance and expand that. So I, I have not asked for something like this during my tenure, but I decided I would put it out there to the board and see. I did apply for the program and filled out the appropriate forms and paperwork and was accepted to the program. So if the Board of Ed is okay with it, I would like to participate in this program. And the dates of the program are as follows here. The first three are virtual. There is some, there is one in Nashville, then the, the fifth one is virtual, although it's unclear exactly what they're going to do with that. And then the sixth one is in San Antonio. So it stretches over a period of, you know, of a couple of years here. And, you know, I feel that it would be a very good experience with respect to enhancing skills. And ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, you get a, I would get a national certification for talent, but that's essentially it. And so it's put to the board for its consideration. And if you are interested in doing that, you could, you know, approve it. And I can give you a rough language simply to approve the superintendent's request for AASA National Certification Program participation.
So I'll introduce you to a motion for this and then we can have a discussion after it's seconded. Any questions to go with it? So are any board members willing to make a motion?
Dana Plord, I'd like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's request to participate in the AASA National Superintendent Certification Program.
Rini, please, a second.
Okay, discussion. Are there any questions in terms of this for any board members? Let's go to Madu. Oh, you are muted, Madu.
Yeah, sorry. Like, sorry, it's new update and it's places, things are in different places. Is this something that we have budgeted for already? I believe there's a line item that we, that we have. And I just wanted to make sure that this is something that we had budgeted for.
Yeah, and there's a, a part of my contract that talks about this kind of thing. So it, you know, we, we do have funds next year for it. But I do put it out in front of the board, you know, obviously as part of the process. So you, you can, you can endorse it or, or not. And if you didn't, I, I wouldn't do it. So.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Let's go to Tony.
I gotta be a little quicker on the raising of the hand. Do you got my question? Perfect. I'll just go ahead and say, I think, you know, obviously adding tools to Dr. Willett's tool chest makes the district stronger. So I completely support this.
Let's go to Plord.
I just wanted to say I attest, Dr. Willett has not requested any, anything in the past four years. And I think that this is a great opportunity in cruising the website. So I am all for it. I would just request, you know, when, when you come back, you, you share some of the key learnings with us. I think it would be great.
I'd do a presentation and everything.
Okay, let's go to Sophia.
I echo what Tony said. I think this will only enhance our district and I think it's awesome. And I hope, Dr. Willett, that they give you some stress relieving techniques because you and all of your other superintendent cohorts can commiserate about how much stress you're all under and perhaps discuss or share ideas on how to alleviate all of that stress.
So at this time, I would like to do a roll call vote. So we will start off. Sophia?
Aye.
Plord?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Madu?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye, and I think Griffin is trying to get back into the meeting, Dr. Willett.
Griffin is lost.
Yep, yep, she is, you're right.
Okay. We will.
That was an I also.
I got the I.
Okay.
We will go to Dana.
Aye.
I'm a I as well. Did we get Griffin back in here?
She's, she should be back, I hope, and thank you, thank you, everyone.
Griffin, we are voting on Dr. Willet's, the A A S A National Superintendent Certification Program.
All right, I was actually able to catch it on TV, so I am an I.
Perfect. I'm an I as well, so this passes unanimously. Dr. Willet, have a good time, learn, and bring it back to us. I mean, I think it's a valuable, it's always free to add, like you said, tools to the tool chest of your, you know, what you're working on, and I think it gives you a good opportunity to speak to other people from around the U S. I think it's a great opportunity.
It is. Thank you. I deeply appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Get the hot chicken while you're in Nashville and bring it back sometime.
I will.
Okay, so now we have a K two for the COVID relief.
Right.
Fund, if we could, Dr. Willet, did you have a written?
Yep, yep, I put it up here if you can, if.
There we go. So I will entertain a motion to acknowledge the B O E review of the COVID agreement in the 6-9 meeting and recommend the continuation of this agreement to the town council.
Madu, reduce your talent, motion to acknowledge the Board of Ed review of the COVID agreement in the 6-19 meeting and recommend the continuation of this agreement to the town council.
Tony, hold on a second.
Any discussion at this time? If not, we will go to a vote. So Sophia?
Aye.
Plord?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Madu?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Griffin? Griffin looks frozen.
Oh, boy. She's having a hard time tonight with this.
Here she is.
Aye, if you're calling on me.
You were frozen for a minute there. As well, therefore, I will get in touch with Tammy to look for an extension for one more year on this. So we put this over here. Perfect. Okay, so at this point, we are going to do the public participation. Comments must be limited to items on the agenda. Once again, Tony will be the two, a two-minute timer, and he will give you a visual and a vocal, let you know when you have 30 seconds left. If you could please put your name and your address. At this time, I will open it up for public participation. So we have Sophia Johnson.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to ask a quick question with regard to the safe return to in-person instruction and continuing continuity of services plan. There wasn't an attachment, and I, you know, I did follow through, follow up, follow with what you guys had on the screen. But is that draft document available for the public to review? And my second question is with regard to, with the safe to return to in-person instruction and the, you know, the continuity of services plan.
You did it, yeah.
Would, I, I apologize, go ahead.
Oh, no, I said, you did it. You got the whole thing out.
Oh, my goodness, like, you know, I'm sitting here and I'm sweating, it's hot.
And it's a long title.
But it is, but it, you know, you know, I could have broke it down into an acronym, but, you know, I'm looking, and like I said, it's hot and it's steam in my glasses. But anyway, my other question was that with, with the consideration of the unvaccinated students and, you know, and I'm speaking as a parent, forgive me, Sophia Johnson, 48 Crystal Lake Road. You know, tonight I'm sitting in as town council liaison, but this question is poised as a parent to a soon-to-be Tallinn High School student. My son is a bit of a worrywart. He, we call him Malakrisis, his name is Malakai. But this pandemic has been, you know, it had a significant impact on his perception of what would be safe for him. And right now, he's comfortable with doing the remote learning. So exploring the option of being able to continue at the state level is something that, as a parent, I have to explore. But I would prefer that he go to, return to in-class because he needs to, although he may not feel that way, he needs to have the interpersonal relationships with his peers so that he can graduate and have, you know, a relative understanding of different people and how they act and how they respond to different things and learn and strengthen his interpersonal skills. But he will, we're allowing for him to exercise his right to not be vaccinated and to continue with wearing a mask. And understanding the impact that that will have to this plan, I, I can almost guarantee that he's gonna be one of those students that will want to do remote. But again, we're going to exercise our parental discretion and have him return to school and have him wear the mask. But is there a contingency plan for a code of conduct with regard to being singled out or bullied or being called a coward? He's dealt with a lot of bullying in his, in his lifetime, being singled out because he's wearing a mask and people knowing that he's wearing a mask would indicate that he's unvaccinated. These are different things that I'm hoping that.
Two minutes is up.
I, so just better process, I, I think I can respond in points of information, so I'll have to hold my response. But I can respond in points of information.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's go to any other public members? Okay, if not at this time, then we can enter into executive session.
Well, you want to go to points of information real quick, just, was that?
You didn't move that on the agenda, though.
Oh, okay. Do you, do you want me to?
Participation.
Okay, so Ms. Johnson, I will, I will reach out to you with an answer to that.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
So we need, we need a motion to enter into the executive session for the purpose of the superintendent's evaluation.
Madu, reduce your talent, motion to enter into executive sessions for the purposes of the superintendent's evaluation.
Christina Plord, second.
Oh, and I'd like to include the superintendent to join us.
Thank you. Otherwise, I'm going home. All right, so just as a matter of process, everybody who is in the room, you, you will end up being put into a waiting room until the executive session is over. So I apologize for about what.
Though, we still.
Oh, right, when, when.
So we actually need to enter, so Sophia?
Aye.
Plord?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Madu?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
I'm a I as well, therefore, we will move into executive session. So at this time, we will go into the points of information. So if any board members have anything they would like to say, you can please raise your hand. And Dr. Willet, I know that you will have something to say, but once you get everybody in the room. So let's go to Griffin.
Thank you. I actually just was wondering if we had any update on the meeting with the town to discuss going back in person after I missed quite a bit of tonight's meeting with lousy internet. It's definitely frustrating on my end, and I'm sure even more so on Dr. Willet's because I think you let me back in about eight times and each one kept kicking back out. So just curious where we stood with going back in person, if you guys knew.
Well, as of right now, I think that Tammy was asking the town attorney about the meeting about meetings to see exactly if we can have everybody there and things of that nature. So we're just trying to make sure that everything would be legal, having that going forward. So that's where we're at. Any other board members? Okay, Dr. Willet, are you ready for the?
Points of information, yes, so, so thank you. And so I think Ms. Johnson is, yeah, she's still here. So the two things, you know, there'll be various students who, you know, who, who, whose families desire the remote program the state provides. And so that group will, will do that. But there'll also be probably a numerous group of individuals who are also either medically impacted or for a variety of reasons will still, you know, want to wear the masks. And so there, there will definitely be, as part of our programming, you know, conversations, social, emotional learning conversations, all, and, and that type of thing to, to, you know, be mindful and help the children be mindful. And, you know, not to judge because you don't know why the child is wearing the mask, and there's a variety of reasons they could be wearing it. So hopefully, it'll be like any other thing that the kids experience with each other that, you know, that is, you know, that is different. They'll, they'll be told and educated that, you know, it's a matter of just difference and need. And this is not something to, to, you know, to, that should be a subject of ridicule. And, and in that vein, there are, there are currently policies that, policies and discipline code, you know, regulations for ridicule and for bullying. And so it would fall under the same kinds of things. So if they were ridiculing them for, you know, having an eye patch, you know, and/or ridiculing them for a mask, it would be processed under the same set of regulations, discipline codes, and so on. So they'll exist, you know, we can process anything that happens with the existing policies. You probably won't have to rewrite or restate them, and we will be ready for it because, you know, we know that, that that type of thing can happen. So, you know, we'll be, we'll be vigilant and we'll be talking to staff about that in the convocation we have at the beginning of the year, things like that.
Thank you.
Anyone else at this time for board members? Not, we do not have anything on the future or new business, so therefore I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Madu, reduce your talent, motion to adjourn.
Rini, be so second.
Okay, any discussion? No, let's do the roll call vote. So Plord?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Madu?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
I'm a I as well. We, I have everybody right, I think so. Therefore, I will adjourn this meeting at 9:32. Everyone have a wonderful night. Bye, guys.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.